Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, January 18th, 2021. Council members are encouraging, I have a meeting announcement, council members are encouraging virtual public participation as there is limited numbers of seating in council chambers due to the rising numbers of COVID cases in our area. All the meetings will be live streamed on the city website and the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye. Here. Here, which one am I saying?
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Strasburger. Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Second. The agenda has been amended. The next order of business is proclamations to be read into the record. Do we have any? No. No proclamations. And then our next order of business is public comment, and I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state, the comments are limited to matters of concern, official actions, or deliberations which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. May we have the first registered speaker, please, and the only registered speaker I have listed is Dr. Ronald Miller. Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronald Miller, Bell Suver. I have a residence in Frankfurt, Kentucky, and Quito, Ecuador. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. Antonio Carlos Basilero de Almeida Jobim Carrota de Epanima. Now that is Brazilian profanity. Worldwide killer is perceived to be part of U.S. national identity. Is it also part of Pittsburgh city identity? Are we bloody less, innocence plus, or more like the Pittsburghers who are depicted in innocent blood? Among the concerns of Pittsburgh City Council are equity, reconnaissance, and religion. Roman Catholic Bishop Zubik at the three January 2022 inauguration ceremony signifies council religion concern, killer religion in Pittsburgh. Do you councilors condemn the killing of the innocents of Pittsburgh children via sexual abuse by Roman Catholic Christian priests as criminal behavior? I do. I have done. Do you think that Pittsburgh priests of the Roman Catholic Church who abused our children are criminals? I do. I and the G.I.S. can find nothing in any public record, correct me if I'm wrong, where you, Councilor O'Connor, Central Catholic attendee, council colleagues, Pedudo, Woganey, have called for the criminal prosecution of these killers of our children's innocence? Why not? I do. Mr. O'Connor, you think your baby is safer around Roman Catholic religionists or atheistic anti-religionists? Where is the ethical legal equity in this? Much has been taken from our children. Nothing, in my view, just, has been returned. Where is the Pittsburgh investigative spotlight paralleling the Boston Globe on this? From the Pittsburgh Post-Gazette, regulatory killer reconnaissance engines in Pittsburgh. Do you councilors condemn hacking to kill the devices of innocent Pittsburgh citizens via killer software programs? Do you, Councilor O'Connor, a supporter of the state of Israel, which supports the use of Pegasus, a software developed by NSO, an Israeli cyber arms company that can invade and operate more than 99% of smartphones worldwide, condemn its use? I do. Mr. O'Connor, how would you like a Pegasus user to hack into your baby's monitors?
There being no further speakers, there's no further registered speakers. No further speakers, we move on to the next order of business, which will be the presentation of papers. We'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
Good morning, President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 21, Resolution Establishing Pittsburgh as an International City of Peace. Bill Number 32, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title One Administrative Article Three Organization, Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety by Adding a New Section 116-17, Regulations of Pedestrian Stops by Officers of the Bureau of Police.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works. Councilwoman Burgess for Councilman Coghill.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Coghill presents Bill Number 26, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Automated Red Light Enforcement Funding Program for Signal Replacement at the Perrisville Avenue and the North Charles Intersection and Further Authorizing Expenditures Not to Exceed $233,066 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 27, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Automated Red Light Enforcement Funding Program for Signal Replacement at the Black Street and North Nagley Avenue Intersection and Further Authorizing Expenditures Not to Exceed $230,599. Bill Number 28, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 666, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter Into an Agreement with the PA Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Module Transportation Fund Program to Accept the Grant and Authorize Necessary Expenditures. Bill Number 29, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Alpine Allegheny, Inc., in an Amount of $5,742.47 for Installation of Bike Racks in the North Side and the Morningside Neighborhoods. Bill Number 30, Resolution Amending Resolution 869 and Amending Resolution Number 98 of 2018, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding to Support Washington Boulevard Multi-Module Path Construction, Further Providing for a Contract and/or Agreements Providing for the Design, Repairs, Maintenance, Improvements, Emergencies, and/or the Purchase of Materials, Equipment, and Supplies in Connection with the Washington Boulevard Trail Project, and Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $560,589 to Account For Bid Accepted That Was Higher Than Originally Anticipated, and for Additional Sources of Funding Not to Exceed $741,249 to Increase the Amount Authorized for this Project to $753,515, an Increase of $12,266 federally reimbursable at 80%, and the Municipal Share of Commonwealth Incurd Costs Not to Exceed $1,900, an Increase of $200 from the previously executed agreement. Bill Number 31, Resolution Amending Resolution 123, Providing for an Agreement or Use of Existing Agreements to Set forth Financial Obligations and Maintenance Responsibilities for the Project and the Pedestrian Facilities with PennDOT, Local Costs Associated with Work to be Done on the SRO 885 Boulevard of the Allies, ADA Ramps, and Upgraded Black Trap Traffic Signal Poles Being Constructed and Inspected by PennDOT, and Further Providing for Reimbursement to PennDOT of the Costs of $77,707.50 to Increase the Total Not to Exceed Amount to $129,624.22, an Increase of $51,916.72.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 33, Resolution Amending Resolution 884 of 2021, entitled, Resolution Making Appropriations to Pay the Expenses of Conducting the Public Business of the City and for Meeting the Debt Charges Thereof for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1st of 2022, so as to reopen the 2022 Budget to Reflect Changes to the Office of the Mayor and the Office of Management and Budget. Bill Number 34, Resolution Amending Resolution 885, entitled, Resolution Fixing the Number of Officers and Employees of the City for the 2022 Fiscal Year, and the Rate of Compensation and Setting Maximum Levels for Designated Positions, so as to reopen the 2022 Budget to Reflect Changes to the Office of the Mayor and the Office of Management and Budget. Bill Number 35, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of David Lewis and His Attorneys in the Amount of $75,000 relating to the Full and Final Settlement of a Case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common, please.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And I apologize. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 36, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 664, which authorized the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with OST, Inc., for Short Term Emergency Professional IT Staffing Resources as needed to fulfill a number of critical IT and device-related projects extending the term. Bill Number 37, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 523, authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into an Agreement with CIS for Albert MD Monitoring Application to Predict Malicious Activities on the City's Network by Monitoring, Alerting, and Analyzing Information Gathered by Sensors by Extending the Term. Bill Number 38, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into a Software License Agreement with Reports Now, Inc., at No Cost to the City.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have one paper. Thank you. So I have two ordinances, and one appointment, and three communications.
Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 22, Ordinance Amending the City Code at Title One Administrative Article Three Organization, Chapter 113, Mayor by Supplementing the Sections Related to the Office of Management and Budget. Bill Number 40, Ordinance to Either Consent to or Disapprove of Proposed Annexation of Wilkinsburg Row. Presented in the Court of Common, please. Number 23, Resolution Appointing Clarissa Cubica as City Solicitor, sorry. Bill Number 24, Communication from Sarah Kinter, Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspection, Submitting PLIs Amended Title VII Business Licenses Rules and Regulations to Reflect the Led Safety Ordinance Requirement for General Contractor Licenses. Bill Number 25, Communication from Sarah Kinter, Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspection, Submitting PLIs Amended Rental Registration Rules and Regulations to Reflect the Led Safety Ordinance Requirement, to Add a Lead Inspection Requirement to Units and Buildings Built Prior to 1978, and to Clarify General Rental Registration Applications' Requirements and Standards. Bill Number 39, Communication from Jake Pollock, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approval on behalf of the Department of Finance for Jennifer Gula and the Department of Public Safety Services for Lee Schmidt, per the Act and Pay Policy Revised in June of 2018.
Okay, let's take the three communications, give a motion to red receiving, file.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It's okay. So then that's approved, and then the two, let's take the one appointment of Chrissie Kubiak for the city solicitor.
A motion to interview, Madam President.
Motion to hold for an interview, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll get that scheduled right away. And the two ordinances, one for the, to waive the rules of council for OMB, and this is for the appointment for Jake Pollock. So I want to, we want to get that scheduled and get everything moving for that. So can we have a motion?
I'm sorry. The rules so that appears on tomorrow's standing committee meeting.
Yes. Motion to waive, I apologize.
Yeah, very brief discussion, please.
It's, I'm sorry, I didn't have a second. Did someone second?
All right.
I'll second, very brief discussion.
We have a second. We had a motion, we have a second. Reverend Burgess seconded, and now Councilman Kraus.
Thanks, Madam President. I just don't know what bill we are on. The only one requesting a waiver of the rules is Bill 22.
Right. And that's the one for OMB.
Understood. Yes, thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of the waiving the rules of council to put this on tomorrow's standing committee's agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. And that's, that's it for those actions. And now we'll move on to any unfinished business, or any unfinished business before council. Seeing none, the next order of business are committees for final action, and we'll start with Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Madam President.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 17, Report of the Committee on Public Works for January 12th, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 7, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with the Housing Authority of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? You've heard the reading of the title of the bill, is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of passage, when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
The bills, bill having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and we'll move on to Councilwoman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 18, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for January 12th, 2022, with affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2122, Resolution Approving a New Institutional Master Plan under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zone in Article Two, Chapter 905 and Article Seven, for Duquesne University, entitled Duquesne University Institutional Master Plan dated September of 2021, on property currently zoned EMI in the First Ward, Council District Number Six. Bill Number 2123, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zone in Article One, Section 90203, zoning map by changing from Uptown Public Ram Sub District Eight to Educational Medical Institution, a certain property at 1323 Forbes Avenue in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System. Portion of the parcel was currently zoned Uptown Public Ram Sub District Eight.
You've heard the reading in the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll. Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President. Eyes seven, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Which committee was that?
And Use and Economic Development.
All right. So that brings us to Urban Recreation. Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess present to myself.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 19, Report of the Committee on Urban Recreation for January 12th, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Five, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation and/or the Director of the Department of Public Safety and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into Agreements in Individual Amounts of $10,000 or Less with Performers, Instructors, Artists, Referees, and Persons with Specialized Skill in Connection with the Department's Recreational and Instructional Programs and Special Event Services. Bill Number Six, Resolution Providing for an Agreement and/or License Agreement for the Use of Certain Property for Senior Facilities for the Provision of Center Services to Seniors in an Amount Not to Exceed $15,200, chargeable to and payable from the Senior Citizens Program Trust Fund in the Department of Parks and Recreation.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eyes seven, no zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Lost my place there for a minute, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 20, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for January 12th, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Eight, Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Winchester Thurston School Project, which will involve the redevelopment renovation of an existing two-story commercial retail building to create a new-day school equipped with offices, classrooms, and restrooms. The site address is 4951 Center Avenue in the Eighth Ward. Bill Number Nine, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 405 North Beatty Street. Bill Number Ten, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Chartiers Playground, 3793 Chartiers Avenue in the City of Pittsburgh, Ward 28.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill, is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eyes seven, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to announcements. Before I have motions or resolutions, I will start with announcements. Tomorrow, Wednesday, January 19th at 10:00 a.m., council will hold their standing committees meeting. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council, City Council meeting webpage by 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also, tomorrow afternoon, on one, at 1:30, council will hold an interview for the Director of Office of Management and Budget. All right. So that takes us to motions and resolutions from members of council.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kraus.
Good morning, Councilman. Thank you. Just briefly, you know, we had a rough couple of days, significant snowfall, and just want to take a moment to thank everybody in that whole process for what they did to help get us through this. We still have a rough patch to get through today. There's still a lot of work ahead of us, but yeah, I especially want to be mindful of the Public Works Department and Acting Director Hornstein and everyone that worked so cooperatively within Bill Crean and all the way down. And you know, for the, for the most part, we had, we had really successful snowfall yesterday from everything that I have been privy to, and want to make sure I thank them. Want to thank soon-to-be Director Jake Pollock for constant communication. I know not only did he speak with me, but he spoke with members throughout the, the time, and that helped greatly. I greatly do appreciate that. But again, we have, we have work ahead of us today. I know that we're getting calls this morning, doing our best to address them on a call-by-call basis, but don't want to miss sight of the big picture and, and make certain that we thank everybody for everything they did to help get us through this, you know? I like to, to thank that, you know, while men and women of public works are out at 3:00 in the morning on snowplows, you know, we're in bed and warm, you know? And, and I don't want that to go, you know, unsaid. So without laboring in anymore, just want to offer my appreciation for everyone that helped get us through this. And like I said, we got a work cut out for us today, and I'm sure we'll get that done as well. Thanks, Mr. Chair, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will say this briefly. Up until today, I have been somewhat quiet about the Wilkinsburg annexation. Starting today, I will no longer be quiet. My parents were married for 59 years before my mother went home to be with the Lord. My brother has been married close to 45 years, 42, I think. I have been married 37 years, so I know a little bit about marriage. The Wilkinsburg annexation is a marriage. When you get married, you don't just marry the person, you marry the family. My wife married into my family, and I became part of her family. And Wilkinsburg, the annexation would make them part of the Pittsburgh family. But if you look at Wilkinsburg on a map, there is no question of who the groom is. Wilkinsburg is the bride. It is an African-American woman. It is over 60% people of color. And you have an African-American bride marrying an African-American groom. The Ninth Council District is the groom of Wilkinsburg. It touches my district almost by 85, 90%. Only a small bit of it touches another part. So make no mistake, this is an African-American issue that affects African-American people disproportionately. My district will either get all of Wilkinsburg or 60, 70, 80% of it. No doubt about it. There's only way you can draw it. And I've been quiet. It does interest me to notice, as always in Pittsburgh, affairs that can, that affect disproportionately African-Americans are not led by African-Americans. We have outside people telling both the groom and the bride what's best for them. This would have been a shotgun wedding, right? They, they got the shotgun, those outsiders got the shotgun and decided what's going to happen. Well, I will no longer stay quiet and watch Well, I will no longer stay quiet and watch that process occur, I, as the groom, will now take my responsibility seriously, and I will defend the bride, I, I knew from beginning, when I first started dating my wife, I knew from beginning I wanted to marry her, but she was not ready, I had to entice her, I had to take her out to eat, I had to get her a ring, or at least try to find a ring, we, it took us three years of, of, of courting, I gained fifty pounds because we, we ate out every day, right, and only after that process did she say yes, and it's been a long love affair, we are not going to have a shotgun wedding, I don't, I don't, I do not propose to have a shotgun wedding with Wilkinsburg either, I intend to court her and to listen to her and to find common ground, and I want to thank the President for her leadership, I will work with her, I will follow her, but I, starting today, will no longer be quiet because I am the groom, and I will, I will, I will, I will now assert my right as a groom to control some of the process of how this occurs, and so, and so, Madam President?
Thank you, Reverend, I just want to say that when we introduced this, when I introduced this today, that we were really ready to work and hold and see what we had to do through this process, but when we got a order from a judge saying make a decision, we thought, okay, we know that we're not ready right now, so some of us had talked about it and thought, you know, in exact, with the council's leadership, thought that it would be best for us to do this now and then come up with a merger process, but for some reason, there seems to be such angst about the merger process, nobody seems to, the people who want the annexation don't seem to want the merger process, I'm saying if it's good for Wilkinsburg and it's good for the City of Pittsburgh both, we should be able to have those conversations in a way that includes both and decide what is the best course of action, if any, to take, but I want the residents of Wilkinsburg to know that we heard loud and clear what they were saying when they called our offices, when they came to meetings, when they sent emails, we heard a lot of their concern, and mostly it was the way it was being done, they felt like it was being forced, and, and so I think that, and now I'm hearing, because I introduced the legislation, that people are saying that we are rushing it, well, no, we've been trying to have the conversation, so I want to make that very clear, this council has been trying to have conversations, and we want to work, I want to say this very clearly, I absolutely believe that the county exec, Controller Liam, and those who are supportive, absolutely believe this is what's in the best interest of Pittsburgh, I don't think they would ever do anything contrary to that, but we may just very well see just things, things very differently in the, in terms of how we proceed in this, with that said, I hope that introducing this legislation today, I intend on scheduling Councilman Coghill's post-agenda, which I think he should be able to do within two weeks, and if he cannot, we'll be glad to work with him on that, but I, I, I want to be clear, I said a gazillion times, we need numbers from our controller, we need numbers from the county, and if we have to, we can call the county treasurer, see what he might know, I just think that there's a lot of people that are accountable to the public that need to have those numbers, and if they don't have those numbers, it makes me very suspicious about the whole process, because I don't, why would I trust somebody who I have no way of holding accountable for numbers, so for me, that's been, that's been one of the holding points is that, and a sticking point for me, is that I really want, I want numbers that are authentic, that are for people that will be held accountable to the public, not somebody who was drafted up in a contract, and not to say that the company is not, you know, reputable, it may be the best, best company in the world to do this, but they're not going to be held accountable to the public, and I think that's why the public votes for the people that they vote for, because they trust them to, you know, look at numbers and do audits and to give them factual information, and not exclude any information, so I want to make sure that we're not excluding, you know, a lot of the information, cost of buildings, the cost of programming, the cost of parks, all those sorts of things that were, you know, the cost of demolition, because they also have a lot of properties that they're saying are in, in poor condition, but I want to be, yesterday, you know, I watched my residents waiting for services for the City of Pittsburgh, and I think you want to have that conversation today about annexation, you want to have the conversation today about sharing services, let's have it, because I think that our residents will have a lot to say about this right now, they waited a long time for a lot of, and our employees are amazing, they're the best, if they can't get something done, there's a reason, and so I, I, I just want to say I don't think our residents are ready for this right now, not until we perfect what we're doing here, or at least get a lot better in some, in some areas, with that said, we're looking forward to the conversations.
Thank you very much, we are now, we will entertain a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting. Is your second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned, stay safe, everybody.